Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We appreciate your time and participation as we work to serve toward our community. For the record, today is April 3rd, 2025, and the time is 6:30 PM. I'll begin with a roll call. So council, when I call your name, please say here or present. Mayor Maxton?
Here.
Councilmember Stroop?
Here.
Councilmember Roden?
Here.
Councilmember Rubin?
Here.
Councilmember Kerner?
Here.
Councilmember Parker?
Here.
And Councilmember Swarick?
Here.
With seven members of council present, a quorum is declared.
And you get personal attention.
I know.
Would everybody please stand and please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Very nice when we have a packed house and to hear that sounded off. Thank everybody for being here tonight. As a reminder, we do live broadcast our meeting. And we'd like to thank everybody that's attending in person to the meeting tonight. Would also like to thank all those that are attending by the live broadcast. For those that are here in the council chambers with us, if you do get an opportunity to speak as part of the meeting tonight, I'd ask that you use the podium up here. And the reason that we do that is the individuals that are watching us by live broadcast cannot hear the comments if they're given from the audience. They need to be given over the microphone that's up at the podium. And when you do get an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that you introduce yourself. And for residents, I'd ask you to state your name and then whether or not you're a Fair Oaks Ranch resident. And if you're with an agency that's here tonight, just state which agency that you are from. And with that, we'll move on to our citizens to be heard tonight. We have two individuals that signed up, and first, Mr. Nichols. It is a reminder, if you're making comments about something that's not on the agenda tonight, council will not be able to address it. And I do ask for the two individuals or any individuals that speak as part of citizen to be heard, that you keep your comments to five minutes or less, please.
I can do that.
All right, sir.
Good evening. My name is Rich Nichols, and I'm a Fair Oaks resident. In 2019, I requested to speak before council on behalf of a number of our citizens who had concerns about the safety of the Keeneland-Venture intersection. They were requesting that the intersection be made a four-way stop due to the limited sight distance when crossing on Ventura. The opinion held by the council at that time was that having to consider one stop sign requested by one person was not an efficient use of the council's time. No action was therefore taken. I made the request again during the COVID crisis. No action was taken. Subsequent to this, I again spoke when Grant provided the council with a well-put-together study, complete with drone videos and graphics, stating that the data did not support a four-way stop. I countered that we are a home rule city, and the council has the power to make it a four-way stop if they wanted. No action was taken. In the fall, in the fall of 2024, the Traffic Safety Committee was formed, and I took my request to them. After presenting my arguments, the committee determined that a four-way stop was perhaps not the best solution to mitigate the safety concerns found at that intersection. They did, however, determine that some other solution was possible. Maybe some signage on Keeneland advising that crossing traffic had limited visibility, or perhaps just a caution sign. I said that that was agreeable, believing that anything that makes it safer for the motorists crossing Keeneland on Ventura would be a step in the right direction. It is my understanding that the committee made such a recommendation to council last week. There was much discussion, but once again, no action was taken. I represent citizens who were requested you to do something to mitigate their safety concerns. Your own Traffic Safety Committee has recommended that something be done. I've made this request six times over as many years. Well, that's it. I'm done. From now on, you may continue to kick this particular can down the road at your leisure. I'll not be speaking on the subject again. Thank you for your attention.
Rich, thank you for being here tonight, and always appreciate your comments when you come and address council. No, seriously, I am serious.
Thank you.
My name is Nolan Keen. I'm a 21-year resident of Fair Oaks Ranch. I used to maybe only jokingly say that if you're dealing with the federal government or the railroad, you're dealing with molasses. And I'm beginning to think it's kind of transcending down to the county level, maybe in the local city level. And I'll give you one example. In May of 2023, 2023, I met with Grant Moody about, and it was a different subject, I-10 corridor route coming on a bicycle trail. There were two segments already funded, from Eisenhower Park to Raymond Russell, and then Raymond Russell to Dominion. And one of them was, the first segment was scheduled for that summer of 2023. Nothing has been done yet. And I contacted Grant Moody's office, and he said, well, they have a bulky property owner, not named, but I think I attended a funeral in his chapel here a couple of months ago. But anyway, you know, I'd like to see some, and it really involves Fair Oaks Ranch, in my view, because you need to have that vision. It's ultimately part of our community if we do get this trail up north and hooking up, somehow hooking up. I'll be long gone before that happens, but that's one example. Another one is, I know we had some mix-up whenever we annexed some property, and it has to do with old Fred. Chuggles or potholes along the way there, and I think about it every darn time I drive on old Fred. And I know the documents, I guess you reached some resolution, and that the upshot of it was that Bear County would take care of the majority of the major potholes. Have not seen any, and this goes back months, if not a year, any change there. And the potholes are still there, so. Anyway, and the third thing is that I've had a group that we've put together a good coalition of people that we want, and working with Jonathan Collins of Lemon Creek Ranch Development, bicycle trail that would go, we call it the Texas Education Trail, starting the fact that it'll go past the Alamo Colleges, you know, under I-10, Alamo Colleges, and with a couple of offshoots in Kendall Counties, go over to the Corley Farms Elementary School. And then I understand that Bernie ISD has reached agreement on 70 acres. Rich Senna says, don't call it a new high school, just call it an educational facility. But offshoot again into Kendall County. And we felt like moving that direction rather than ultimately moving toward Fair Oaks Ranch along, ideally, Bear County. And that would be more saleable, but we're like a ship without a rudder, and I need some help to get, and I really think that should be turned over to Bear County, because we're talking about Bear County property all the way. And so, anyway, I'd like to see some local help, local action. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Always appreciate your comments also, and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Those were the only two individuals that we did have sign up for citizens to be heard. Is there anybody else here tonight that didn't get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak as part of citizens to be heard? Yes, sir. Mr. Roth?
I understand you have an item on the consent agenda?
Sir, would you mind stating your name and?
Ah, Jim Roth, sorry.
And you're a Fair Oaks Ranch resident too?
I'm a resident of Fair Oaks for about 20 years now. There is a item on the consent agenda about the MDD Board. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'd like to make two points on that. At the last council meeting, there were seven members of city council, of which three were part of the MDD Board. Two members of the MDD signed up to speak. That makes two quarums and one, only one meeting notice. Now, somehow, the MDD members were asked to leave. Don't know how it happened. It seems like there was a deliberation. There was a meeting, two members left. Why not have two members of city council leave? They were both MDB members and city council members. Then you have a quorum of city council, and you do not have a quorum of the MDD Board. That would have been a simple solution. The council proceeded to deliberate and make a decision in a first reading with a six-to-one vote. I commend Rubin for not voting that. I've heard, and one must consider, that the two MDD members that were asked to leave were going to state the fact that the MDD Board, as a whole, had not come to a decision on the amendment. They were denied their First Amendment right to address the council on an agenda item, mostly because you had three members of council on the MDD Board, preventing any member from the MDD Board ever speaking if the members are present. That's a good reason not to change your procedure and only allow two members of city council. In my opinion, the council should vote, void the six-one vote, and apologize to Mr. Fairhurst and Mr. De Ciani. There could be other steps, but that would be a start. My second point, who controls the MDD? City council or the MDD Board? The MDD Board has bylaws they established years ago. They reference them. The city council has the right to remove the MDD Board anytime they see fit and appoint a new one. So basically, is the MDD Board a governing body? They state they are by state code, but are they really if they have to bring everything to city council? And that brings up another point. The city website has advertising about the MDD Board. They state that the MDD Board will make the final decision on the request and authorize the amount of funding. Is that true? Even the city attorney advised council at the last meeting that some city councils are the MDD Board, and they can replace the board anytime. Other communities have bylaws which require the city council approval of MDB Board, MDD Board decisions. We do not. I think it would be best to review the interaction of the MDD Board and city council. Again, I ask, who controls the MDD Board? When you're allowed to talk, it is on the agenda.
Sir, right now, it's on the consent agenda.
What's the difference?
Right now, we would not discuss that item unless it is removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. Then I ask that it be removed.
And thank you for your comments also.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else that is here tonight that would like to speak? With that, we'll move on to the presentations that we have on the agenda for tonight. We have three presentations. And first, we'll start off with the introduction of our new police officers, and I'll turn it over to Chief Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and those here tonight and watching at home. I'm Todd Smith, and I'm your chief of police. I'm excited to introduce six new members of our department as we strive to be fully staffed by the end of the year. First, I'd like to introduce Sarah Kloboski. She's our new animal services officer. She has experience as a kennel attendant, receptionist, and a veterinary technician for eight years. She also worked for San Antonio Animal Care Services for about two years in the placement department. She was responsible for owner surrenders, adoptions, and foster and rescue placement. Not only was she named Rookie of the Year, but also responsible for coordinating San Antonio's participation in the mega adoption event in Houston. She's a certified animal control specialist and has dedicated her life to helping animals and pets any way she can. She's already made a huge impact in her short time here with us, and we're lucky to have her as part of the team, so welcome aboard. Next up, we have three new police officers to introduce to our community. First, we have Michael De Hoya. Michael wanted to be a police officer as soon as he graduated high school, but not being 21 years of old proved challenging. He wasn't eligible yet. Instead, he applied with the Bear County Sheriff's Office and became a detention officer. He served in this role for two years before applying to the San Antonio College Law Enforcement Academy, graduating, and now is, he is in our field training program, so welcome aboard. Next, we have our very own Garrett Crawford. He began his service to our city in 2022, when he was an intern, writing and observing. He then became our animal services officer in March of 2023. He graduated from UTSA in May of '23 and then attended the San Antonio College Law Enforcement Academy. He recently graduated from the academy in February of this year and is now in our field training program. Welcome aboard. Next up, we have Charles Starks. Charles started his professional life, serving our country as an officer in the U.S. Marine Corps for over four years, and he served in Desert Shield and Combat Operations in Desert Storm. He then worked as an appraiser and underwriter in the mortgage business. In 2003, he and his wife moved to Fair Oaks Ranch and joined the leadership team at USAA. After a successful professional career, he decided to start a new chapter. He enrolled at the Alamo Area Council of Governments Police Academy. He graduated in February and is now in our field training program. How lucky are we to have a Fair Oaks Ranch resident decide to give back and serve our community as a police officer? We're very blessed to have you. Welcome aboard. Next up, we have our two new civilian investigators with us tonight. First, we have Pat Kearney. Pat retired from the King County Sheriff's Office in Washington State after 25 years of service. He served as an investigator in street crimes, narcotics, vice, special assault, and robbery-homicide. During this time, he was also assigned to be a task force member on the Green River homicide investigation. He also served seven years as a sergeant in patrol and investigations, including undercover for the narcotics and vice unit, precinct school resource officer, and field training officer manager and coordinator, patrol supervisor, as well as administrative sergeant, and instructor for undercover operations. We are fortunate that he and his family relocated to the area, and he has been instrumental in helping us audit our investigative division and implement improvements for the last six months. Welcome aboard. And next, we have Rodney DeBose. Rodney began his career as a special agent for the Naval Investigative Service, or NIS. During his time with the NIS, he investigated general crimes, conducted foreign counterintelligence investigations, and provided executive protection for the Secretary of the Navy, as well as Colonel Oliver North during the Iran-Contra hearings. He then transferred to the Drug Enforcement Administration, or the DEA, and was assigned to Operation Snowcap. He continued his career with the DEA and became the Asset Forfeiture Operations Supervisor, and eventually retired as the Asset Forfeiture Director in the West Region. After retirement from the DEA, he accepted a position at the University of California in San Diego as the grievance investigator for the Academic Personnel Department, where he investigated violations of campus and university policies by academic appointees. Following his time at UCSD, he accepted a position as the Management, Analysis, and Controls Manager for the Third Marine Corps Aircraft Wing at Marine Corps Air Station Miramar. In this role, he was responsible for the oversight of mission assurance, consisting of internal controls and intelligence, collection and distribution for the F-35 squadrons. I wanted to close by saying we now have over six decades of experience in our Investigations Division, with a focus on victims, investigative follow-up, accurate reporting, and we also have gained some amazing role models to help us coach and mentor our young staff into becoming the best police officers and the best police department in the country. We're thrilled to have these new and amazing people join our team, so thank you for this opportunity to be able to share our new amazing staff. Do you mind if we take a quick picture?
Thank you, chief.
Mind if we take a picture?
Oh, let's do it. While you're doing that, I'd like to highlight Sarah and her capture of the new baby owl that they found on Vestal Park. But it's just amazing. We all know the wildlife that we have around Fair Oaks Ranch, and to save a baby owl, a great way to start your job here at Fair Oaks Ranch.
He's thriving, by the way.
Loving life, huh?
Thank you.
And Joanna, we're going to present Employee of the Quarter?
All right. Not as tall as chief. Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name is Joanna Merrill. I'm the Director of Human Resources and Communications for the city. And tonight, I am very honored to present our Employee of the Quarter II, which runs for the months of January through March, as Mr. Casey Parker. Casey, if you'll come down here and join me really quick. So Casey, as you can tell, was running our live streaming for this meeting today, but he is our multimedia communications officer. And he, single-handedly, runs our communications department. He ensures that we have communications that are clear, engaging, they have consistent messaging across all of our many, many platforms, and his professionalism and responsiveness, and just his collaborative spirit across all of the departments, when it comes to residents, when it comes to our media relationships, has just been an invaluable asset to our team. His dedication to effective communication supports the city's mission to deliver exceptional public services, and it really does just foster community engagement by being able to get our messages out there. He keeps our residents well-informed by promoting transparency, and he strengthens the city's presence, not only online, but within the community itself. Casey just really plays a vital role in enhancing the quality of life here at Fair Oaks Ranch, and his ability to just adapt to situations daily, lead and just provide innovative, future-forward thinking, has really just demonstrated his commitment to excellence here at the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. And just to name a few of the items that he got nominated for, I mean, it's a pretty long list this year. I believe he actually got three consecutive nominations, all for some of these items that I'm about to list here. Just within the last year and over the several months, Casey has completed the website redesign for our online platform. He recently created and has been consistently pushing out the On the Ranch Monthly Newsletter, which was actually nominated for the 2025 Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers Award. So we're hoping to get that one in the bag for this coming year. He also created the State of the City slide presentation while maintaining all of his normal daily communications and operations. And then he also provides our urgent critical messaging during all of the weather events that we've had over the last few years, and he's really just played a critical role in ensuring that ensuring that our residents are well-informed, that our staff is also communicating internally. And on top of that, he's also helped enhance some of our media outreach by writing for some of the local magazines, by providing press releases for our local contacts with the newspapers. Even recently, he's even further enhanced our social media presence by helping our police department launch their new social media channel. So, if you haven't followed that, please go take a look and follow that as well. And then he's also contributing major factors to our strategic action plan, and he recently just conducted a 41-page qualitative performance assessment on our strategic communications plan, which is no small feat. So, it's for all of these sayings combined with just his amazing attitude and ability to work with anybody and be so flexible. It really has just highlighted his ability to manage multiple responsibilities while just maintaining a real, really high quality of professionalism and collaboration and transparency to help enhance the communications within our city department. So, thank you, Casey, and congratulations on winning Employee of the Quarter.
And then we have one last presentation to do tonight. All great presentations, but I think this one's pretty special. Can I get this by myself? And if I could have the members of the welding and fabrication class come on up, and Mr. Vic? No, come on up here. This is the, well, last week, we were contacted by the welding and fabrication class that's run out of Champion High School, that they had something to present to the City of Fair Oaks Ranch. And this is what was presented to us yesterday. Yeah, it's, and it was a great opportunity to go down and meet all the individuals that were taking the class, and Mr. Vic, who is the instructor for the class, and learn about this career technical education programs that are run out of Champion High School. Well, this one specifically out of Champion High School. And a great learning experience for me, but one, to get to meet all the boys, and this class happened to be all boys that I met, but to meet all the students that were a part of the class and to hear their experiences and what they've been through. And it was just amazing. I knew a little bit about the CTE programs, but actually being a part of it yesterday and get to hear what you go through was just amazing. And to see the craftsmanship of what they did, I mean, this is flawless, what they have presented to the City of Fair Oaks Ranch. But what I learned about their program is that through this class, they get a certified welder's card. Is that the right way to word it? And for every test that they go through, they get different certifications that are put onto this card. And yesterday, they even demonstrated one of the certifications that they completed, and I believe it was two pieces of metal that had been welded together. And originally, when we looked at them, I don't know, they were about that thick and about like this, welded together. And when I looked, Mr. Vic showed it to me, and when I looked at it, I couldn't even, I couldn't even tell that it was welded. It looked like it was just one piece of metal. And they took this and they put it into a compressor or a vending machine, which basically had it laying on two platforms like this, and a 20-ton spike came down in the middle of the weld and bent it into a U. And it didn't take very long to do it either. But, and pulled it out, and then he showed it to me, and my lack of knowledge about welding, I just asked Mr. Vic, I mean, how does this look? And he said, "That looks really, really good." And honestly, even bent, it showed no signs of cracking, or you could tell where the weld was put together. But I just wanted to comment on that because I think it should be highlighted, the education that's coming out of the Bernie ISD and what is being presented to our kids of our community and of Bernie that attend those schools. And I'm just, I don't know, when I walked out of there, I was just so proud to realize what is coming from our school district. And then to be recognized and to see what y'all have done for the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, I just can't thank you all enough. And so, I asked them to come here tonight, one, so we could recognize them, but also so we could present to the residents of Fair Oaks Ranch the work that they did for us. So, thank you all very much.
I'd like to say it's a great honor. Our motto is, by Dr. Craft, is one part.
Hold on a second. You got a boogie, boys?
This may be a terrible idea, giving me the microphone. Somebody put me on the timer. So, as we've grown as a community, I grew up in this area. And yes, we're the prettiest area on planet Earth to live, but we have the greatest school. We were a destination district for a long time, so, I mean, we embrace problems open-armed it, right? Because we're still investing in our youth, our kids. We live by the motto, "One Bernie and Community First." I've been blessed in 20 years to start this program that a vocational educational movement across the state and nation is coming out of Bernie, Texas. We're on the brink of it happening. All the banners and trophies we've won, we've worked for the government, those are cool. But the coolest thing is seeing Jack Andrew stand right here as a young man that's a senior in high school that took and learned AutoCAD. So, he had to take a concept, make it become reality, and watch it turn into an item sitting here? That's priceless. No university, I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt doesn't create Jack. This is where our tax dollars need to go if our democracy, no matter what side of the aisle you stand on, this is the investment we need to make in America. And it needs to be screamed from the mountaintops. And I'm proud to be from Bernie ISD and Kendall County, knowing that this community rallies behind this vision. Yes, sir.
I just think it's wonderful that people are getting to know that the trade opportunities could create tremendous wealth for people. It's so important that we have trade education going the way you're doing it. I'm really proud of you.
Yes, sir. I appreciate all the support, and it's, our democracy is definitely on the line, right? For it. And we got to realize we're, the lights are on, we're not by candle, we're not fanning ourselves because it's awful hot right now. And it's okay for our kids to go into the trades. Our trades were built on highly intelligent people. We got brainwashed that college was the only answer. It's great, but this is what matters. This is cool stuff here, and we can't thank Fair Oaks enough for giving us the opportunity to build something, to have here, and we're just proud to be a part of this community, and thank you. Y'all have got a great marriage.
And how qualified are individuals coming out of your class with their certifications?
Our kids can leave, and I don't like putting a dollar amount on something, but I'm going to throw, our kids can leave making $85,000 right out of high school. Our kids can go on to make $150,000 within two, three years. I've got a young man that called me. Your Assistant City Manager is incredible. I got to spend time with him, and we were talking about Alaska. And I've got an ex-student of mine that graduated two years ago. He's on the North Slope right now welding, making crazy money two years out of, out of high school. We've got Ethan Thornton that just graduated. He's 21 years old. He was an MIT grad. He dropped out of MIT freshman year. No investment. He just landed an $80 million contract with the U.S. Army building drones. That's the American dream, folks. It's fun sitting there Friday night and watching those football lights, but the fact of the matter is, it's not fun seeing your 25-year-old still sleeping on your couch, not knowing what direction they're going to go. So, I don't want to take up all y'all's time. You got a big agenda, but we proudly say from Bernie ISD, we're proud to see this sign hung, and thank you for supporting our children.
And we'll find a special plot, place here in our city hall that we'll, we'll hang this up, and I believe our intent is we'll put a plaque with it fabricated and donated by the welding and fabrication class at Champion High School. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you for being here. Thank you all again.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Oh, you don't want to scratch it. Well, that completes the presentations that we had tonight. We'll move on to our consent agenda. We do have two items on the consent agenda tonight. First is the approval of the March 20 of 2025 Regular City Council Meeting Minutes, and the second is approval of the Second Reading of an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas, amending Chapter 1 General Provisions, Article 1.08 Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Section 1.08.001 Municipal Development District Board of Directors of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Code of Ordinances, and removing place position and allowing for changes of status of board members. Is there any council member that would like to remove any of these items from consent to consideration?
I'd like to remove eight and put it to consideration.
Okay. And I will remove it into consideration, and we're going to put it after Item 10 on our agenda. And everybody else is okay with the remaining? So, remaining on the consent agenda is approval of the March 20 of 2025 Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Send me.
Ruben, and a second from Laura. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Thank you all. Next on our agenda for tonight is a public hearing to address our building codes, and I'll turn this over to Scott Davis to get us started with this one. And Christine, I have the time now is 7:08, and I'm opening the public hearing.
Good evening to the City Council, the Mayor, city staff, and all present. I hope all are well. My name is Scott Davis. I'm the Building Official for the City of Fair Oaks. I'm here today to discuss a proposal regarding Kitchen Island 120-volt receptacles. The requirement of having receptacles on Kitchen Islands has been part of the building codes for many years and has implemented, and was implemented as a safety measure to protect our citizens. Proposed is an ordinance adopting the latest ICC and NEC codes. However, in the new 2024 International Residential Code and the 2023 National Electrical Code, Kitchen Island receptacles are now optional. The updated codes allow for an optional junction box to be installed in place of a receptacle, providing the potential for a future receptacle, but without the requirement for it at the time of construction. That said, city staff believes that receptacles on Kitchen Islands should still be required. The absence of a dedicated receptacle creates unnecessary safety risks, which is why we are proposing an amendment to the ordinance adopting the most recent building codes. The proposed ordinance adopts the 2024 IRC and the 2020 NEC, but it strikes out the optional junction box provision. This means that under the proposed amendment, the receptacle on the Kitchen Island would still be required, as it has been for many years. This is the recommendation, recommendation of staff for the safety of our residents. And that concludes my presentation of the Kitchen Island receptacles.
Yeah. So, basically, we're adopting all of the, the new, are they national level? The new codes for building?
Yes, sir.
Minus the amendment that you just presented on the outlet requirement for islands?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any residents here that would like to make any comments related to this public Okay. And any comments from council?
I think we, we talked about this earlier, but it could be stricter than what it is. So, I think if we adopted all of it, it would be like one outlet for every seven or eight foot or something, but we're just, we're just requiring one outlet for the entire island.
Actually, currently, the code that we're under requires one receptacle for the first nine square feet of Kitchen Island, and then one for every 18 square feet after that. In some of these islands and these houses, you could end up with three receptacles, which is new. So, I think this junction box on the new code is a backlash for that. But to me, the safety concern is, it's a scalding hazard where somebody could plug a crock pot, say, into the wall receptacle and set it on the island and then have it fall off, or a little child running. And that's why we've always had one receptacle on an island, so we don't have the cords crossing the aisle. With this junction box, which doesn't say you can't have a junction box and a receptacle, it's just, I don't want to just allow them to have the junction box. We're back to somebody may plug in, and so it's, it's not addressing the original safety concern and why the receptacle had always been in the code.
Very good. Anybody else?
I got a question. Was a reason ever given as to why that requirement was removed or changed?
No, sir. I don't know the reason for that. I do know that one of the things that they're doing is they're moving the receptacle from the side, because currently, the code we have allows a receptacle on the side of the island. The overhang of the countertop can't be more than six inches, and it can't be more than 12 inches down, and I think the thought process there is they didn't want, you know, something trailing over. And yet, they still wanted to take that away because you could still catch that as you walked past. So, now, the way, the new code is, is your options are to either have an island set up so that it's two-layered, two-tiered, like you have a bar and then the kitchen, and then so you'll have a backsplash, and you can put receptacles there. Or they have these pop-up receptacles now where you press and they pop up, and now you can plug in, and they're, they're rated for that. So, with this amendment, what we will end up with is they will have to have at least one receptacle in either of those two manners. They can't put it on the side anymore.
Good question. So, Christine, I have the time now is 7:13, and I am closing the public hearing. And we'll move on to our consideration items for tonight. The first consideration item is the consideration and possible action approving the First Reading of an Ordinance, amending the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Code of Ordinances, Chapter 3 Building Regulations, Article 3.03 Building Code, Article 3.04 Residential Code, Article 3.05 Energy Conservation Code, Article 3.06 Plumbing, Article 3.07 Electricity, Article 3.08 Mechanical Code, and Article 3.09 Fuel/Gas Code, Article 3.11 Swimming Pools and Spas, and Chapter 5 Fire Prevention and Protection, which is Article 5.02 of the Fire Code. And Scott, is there anything additional that we need to present as part of the?
Yes, sir. So, I'm here to present an ordinance amending the City Code of Ordinances by adopting the 2024 International Code Council Model Codes, the 2023 National Electrical Code, with local amendments as discussed in the public hearing. There is one additional change that is not reflected in the ordinance on page 21 of the Agenda Packet under Article 5 Fire Code, Section 502.001. The proposed ordinance shows adoption of Appendix B to the International Fire Code. Appendix B provides fire flow requirements for buildings. However, in our UDC, it directs the use of a different method for calculating the required fire flow. To avoid creating inconsistencies, staff recommends that Appendix B be struck through when considering this ordinance. So, I don't, yeah, we don't want conflicting methods of calculating fire flow.
So, what you're proposing is a change to what is reflected in the packet right now?
Yes, sir. I would like to strike out Appendix B because our UDC already provides us with a method for calculating fire flow.
Any concern from council members? Any concern from council members on that? Okay.
That concludes my presentation of the consideration items.
Any other further questions from council?
I think the one thing that we talked about was the siren-operated sensor for opening and closing the gates. And this is, we learned today that there's... They have a separate siren, so it won't accidentally trigger, like a fire truck's going down Fair Oaks Parkway with a siren on. It won't open your gate. So they have to actually intend to open it.
Yep. Any questions from anyone here tonight on this? Okay, then could I get a motion? To approve the first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Code of Ordinances, Chapter 3 Building Regulations, Article 3.03 Building Code, Article 3.04 Residential Code, Article 3.05 Energy Conservation Code, Article 3.06 Plumbing, Article 3.07 Electricity, Article 3.08 Mechanical Code, Article 3.09 Fuel/Gas Code, Article 3.11 Swimming Pools and Spas, and Chapter 5 Fire Prevention and Protection, and as presented, amending Section 5.02.001, Paragraph A, excluding Appendix B. From Jonathan?
Second.
Any further discussion from council? With a motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is approved.
Excuse me, mayor. Who made the motion in second?
Jonathan made the motion and Keith made the second.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to our second consideration item tonight, which is the item that was removed from consent, which is approving the second reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas, amending Chapter 1 General Provisions, Article 1.08 Boards, Commissions and Committees, Section 1.08.001 Municipal Development District Board of Directors of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Code of Ordinances, removing place position and allowing for changes of status of board members. And Keith, I'll hand this over to you since you pulled it.
Yeah, thank you. I was, you know, I'm also sit on the MDD, and I know this item had came... had come up at one of our previous meetings. That was... It was discussed, but no action was taken. And I know recently, the amendment that we voted on, and I did vote in favor of it the last meeting, really just clarifies the way council would pick these positions. And really, in either the existing language or the amendment, pretty much are, in my opinion, either one work for the council and the MDD. But I believe it might be a good idea, the way this came up, I think the rules of procedure the MDD operates under, I, you know, we wanted to... We wanted some clarity there. So I think it'd be a good idea to put this on pause, not to take it off, but to put it on pause and let the MDD look at to see if there's any other suggestions they may have for council, so that, you know, we don't piecemeal any changes that council may make to how we operate, make changes to the MDD. So I guess my thought is that there may be some other things that the MDD would like to discuss. And I think just because of the conference we had the last meeting with some members being here and not being able to speak on it, I feel like it might just be in the best interest of both the council and the MDD, just to put it on pause. And I think the MDD will be meeting this next week, and maybe that could be on their agenda item to see if there's other things that might present themselves that they could recommend to council. And anybody can recommend anything to council. Our committees can recommend things, individuals can recommend things. So that's, I guess, that's the sole reason I suggest we bring this up for discussion.
Okay. Any other comments from council?
I agree with Keith, and that was the lone no reason for that was because I know at the last MDD meeting in January, my memory is we began the discussion, and I think we actually started tinkering with the language, but didn't come to consensus or didn't take any action. And so with the... I think the intention was to resume that conversation. And so the meeting is next week. And so the reason I didn't support it was because I wanted the MDD an opportunity to go over it again and make recommendations. And I understand, I guess, the procedurally, it's a simple recommendation, and the city council can go as they wish with this sort of policy change. But I think that, you know, MDD started the conversation, they should continue the conversation and see if a consensus could be made and recommendations could be made, and then brought back.
Okay. Anybody else? Any...
Mayor, I would like to make one other comment. I get Mr. Rolf, who's... who made some comments. The MDD does have its own set of bylaws and rules it operates under, and it does make its own decisions. The city council does not direct the MDD how to make decisions. So it has a whole set of operating procedures, and those are available to the public. In fact, our meetings are just like this. They're open to the public, and you're welcome to attend, and even get copies of the agenda in advance and come into a forum just like this. But it does operate independently by state law. The members of MDD have to be appointed by the city council, but they operate solely independent of city council. So just to clarify your question, sir, that you had on that, so.
I was wondering, they're not called bylaws, they're called...
What, rules of procedure, correct.
Mr. Rolf?
You're correct.
If you could... If you're going to continue to speak.
It was just clarification on the rules of procedure.
They're called rules of procedure. I said bylaws, but you're correct. Thank you for the correction. So just wanted to address that in case people had a question. And at any point in time, you can address any of these questions to any MDD member, and we're happy to answer and clarify, because that's the most important thing, is to be clear what happens. So, thank you.
Any other questions from anybody here tonight? And Keith, I believe you were gonna... Were you gonna make a motion, or?
Yeah, I didn't write it down, so I'm gonna have to make it on the fly. I would like to make a motion that we...
Postpone?
Postpone the second reading of the amendment regarding the MDD changes that were in the packet.
Second.
Generally, we set a timeframe for postponement.
Well, let me clarify... Let me modify that. Say, I'd like to postpone it for 60 days to give MDD time to talk through it.
As a recommendation, mayor and council, I mean, if you want to use 60 days, that's fine. But if you prefer, you can make a motion to postpone indefinitely, which would allow us to bring it back at any meeting that you so choose.
Let's... Let me correct that. Thank you. We'll postpone it indefinitely. That way we can bring it back when the MDD has done their part. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I have some clarity, please? When it comes back, the way you worded your motion was that postpone the second reading. So when it comes back, it will be modified potentially from its original writing. So will it come back as a first reading or a second reading?
I think that would be determined based on the modifications that would be made. So right now, we don't know that if any modifications would be made.
Correct.
I think what Keith is recommending, that this be taken back, allow the MDD to review, and then would come back to council, so.
Correct.
I guess my thought is it may come back as a first reading or a second reading, depending how P and Z proceeds.
MDD.
MDD.
But as of right now, the motion is to postpone this second reading to an indefinite period.
That's my motion.
Okay.
And then, okay.
All the help.
Any other discussion from council? All right, with the most... Sure, sir. We kind of passed the opportunity, but I'll do some leeway for you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I did a little research on the MDDs, and the lawyer might confirm this, but most MDDs that are established are established by a city. They're an entity of the city, but they are a separate government entity. But most of the bylaws give, in their bylaws, that the city council has the final say. All of it has to be... It's pointed out all the time. And the way ours was written up, it's not pointed out that way. You publicly say that the MDD can make a final decision. Well, that can lead to an embarrassment sometimes. You might want to change those bylaws.
Thanks, sir. Any other discussion from council? Then with the motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you, Keith. And thank you for all the help. With that, we'll move on to what would be our third consideration item tonight, was the consideration and the possible action approving a resolution amending the City of Fair Oaks Ranch's personnel policies. And Jim, you're gonna lead us through this one?
I'll do my best, sir.
Always do.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. Jim Williams, Assistant City Manager, and we are back for the next phase of our Personnel Policies Manual Update. Tonight, we're going to go through three personnel policies. Flip the slide here. Here we go. We're going to go over the number six, work schedules, number nine, holidays, and number 11, use of city property. And in your packet is Exhibit A, which has the final proposed version, and then it also includes the markup version. And just for your knowledge, I didn't mention this last time, these have been reviewed by council, so just want to point that out real quick. Okay, let's go.
Legal counsel.
Our city attorney's office, yes. Yeah, city attorney's office.
As opposed to city council, legal counsel?
Not that council, sorry. You're getting your bite right now.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Okay. All right. Okay, number six, pretty straightforward updates. Primary reasons for the change on the work schedules policy is what we wanted to do is document basically our current practice for work periods. We have about three... We have exactly three groups of folks that we have working different pay periods, and we just documented that. We also updated the time and attendance reporting, basically just clarified that language and really started pushing the responsibility for oversight on that down to the supervisory level. We also updated the overtime language to match our current practice with the work periods' schedules. And then, some other reasons for change, just clearly define our rules for compensatory time accrual and use how we're going to do that when it happens, if it happens. Review and document our current practices for callback and standby assignments. We had council actually... City Attorney's Office actually spent a little extra time on that, just to make sure we were doing it right and compensating employees correctly for being on call. And then we looked at break-in and meal periods, and then ADA requirements on how we treat nursing mothers who need to nurse and breast pump. So that's the rundown of number six. Number nine, holidays, it's a shorter policy. Really, the primary reason for that change is over time, council's made some changes to what is the approved holiday list. We just made that match. So we have 13 approved holidays now in one personal day. We also dug into patrol officer pay for when they work holidays. We just matched the current practice to what we actually do, which is we pay the officers for the holiday they work. And then what an employee would need to be... What the employee's status would need to be to get paid for a holiday pay. They basically need to be in paid status before they would be eligible to earn a holiday pay. And then the bigger change was number 11, the use of city resources. Three big changes. Generally, just needed a lot of cleanup, just some old, old language in it. We also changed the accident review process. In that process, it had some trigger points and when the accident review board would meet, and then what would happen as far as kind of like quasi-disciplinary action. What we're proposing is to basically strip out the disciplinary part and lean on our disciplinary policy that we just adopted last week, at the last council meeting. And then the other piece of that is Senate Bill 1893 Compliance, which is the TikTok policy. I'm sure... We've been compliant with that with the... Inside the organization, we know the list of prohibited applications that the governor's office has pushed down. But we got that... We just went and integrated that into our current personnel policy, use of city resources. And then some other systems. We took the Appendix A, Information Systems, acceptable use policy, that was all the way in the back of the binder, just updated that to be not 2006 language, and then just put it in this section, and we'll just abandon that Appendix A. And then we also put in some artificial intelligence use standards. And basically, it's not like what artificial intelligence we're going to use or how we're going to use it. It's just like, hey, before you go and use AI, don't be putting private stuff in there, because once you lose it, you lose it. Just be careful on how we use it as employees. And that's it. That's the gist of the rundown on the changes. I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions?
So on page 41, there on 6.0302, we struck through all the overtime and reworded it very cleanly. Would it be worth it, you know, from a new employee coming on standpoint for them to see that the policy of the city is to keep overtime at a minimum? That's one of the things that got struck through and never got put back.
The policy is to keep overtime at a minimum, yes. Is that the question?
Yeah, that didn't make it in the final revision. That one just got struck through, just kind of...
We could easily put that back in, but that's how we intend to manage work schedules.
Yeah. The question is, would it help for the employee to see that in the handbook? You know, would it help to leave it in rather than strike it out and not put it back?
I don't know. I'm looking at city manager. What do you think?
I... I don't know how much harm it would do, but I tend to... As a manager, representing management of the council, I tend not to confer delegated away management rights where possible. So I... My... So my default is to remain silent on items that are management right. So I would... So my... I guess, to answer your question, my recommendation is to not put that in.
Very good.
But if you want to, we'll obviously...
But I think what you're stating, Scott, is earlier in the manual, it does state the approval of overtime is at the management level.
True.
Yes.
To work overtime, it must be approved through management prior to being conducted. Is that...
That's accurate.
Yes.
Any other questions? Good question, though. Thanks, Jonathan. Any other questions from council?
Got a couple of comments.
Okay.
And I've talked to the Assistant City Manager on this as well. And the... In 1105, prohibited technologies, we referenced in that second paragraph, you know, covered application. And these are the ones you just referred to up on the screen. It's by the state code. You know, applications such as TikTok or anything by the company called ByteDance, which we all have heard about that being an exposure to the users. I also wanted to suggest adding to that second sentence, in addition to this, that's identified here, that or any other application identified by the city manager is a covered application. The reason for that is that the state may just identify a certain set of applications. We, the city, might be more restrictive. So it was a suggestion that we could add that to just make sure that if somebody was using an application that we, the city, didn't approve that was similar, that we just include that in our ability to approve in advance. So that was one suggestion. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that, but just...
Now, let's discuss that real quick.
Discuss that, yep.
I think that's a good idea, too. I can't ever keep up with all the applications. So just when I think that I'm the cool mom, because I have TikTok, I've learned that TikTok is not cool anymore, and there's this other application. And so as it evolves, having kind of a catch-all in there might help the city from having to go back and revise it and revise it and revise it, you know, to add all these other applications that might become unwanted in the future.
Yeah. Mayor?
Maybe just a little background, too. Maybe just a little background, too. This TikTok policy, as we're calling it from the Senate bill, the language in 11.05 is literally word-for-word from the Department of Information and Resources guidance on how to implement that. So Mr. Roden's amendment would be complimentary, read that. We don't, I talked to the city manager about it. It wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't help, it would be, it would be, just give us a little bit more, so.
What do you think, Scott?
So, you know, when I received this question, I did a quick look at what our draft says, and I feel like the policy covers it in a couple places. In 110402, it states that the city manager or their designee will draft and maintain supplemental security and operational procedures that conform to this policy and enable the city to adapt to sudden changes and threats in the IT environment. And, I need my glasses. 110606, I think it says, is the city manager may implement procedural controls to restrict unauthorized AI usage. So, condensing that down is what that means. And what we have already is, in addition to the formal personnel policy, we have administrative directives for several of these, including our IT use and software applications being one of those that directs in more detail those applications that are either banned or restricted in some way. I think it's, to, I think to council member Stroop's point, it's easier from an administrative standpoint to identify the applications that would be forbidden for one reason or another than to try to proactively identify those that are allowed, because it's virtually infinite and never changing, right? So, so I think where Mr. Roden was going, if I heard him correctly, was that essentially any new application would require city manager approval before implementation or use, if I heard that right.
Yeah, I think, to answer that, I think the, so I worked for a Fortune 100 company for many years, and we identified the applications that should only be used in our environment. And so my concern from a tech, IT standpoint is that we should only allow applications that are either IT policy or our IT department or the city manager approves, that people cannot bring in an application from the outside just because of the risk of the connectivity to different programs. So as long as we've got the, that covered, I don't, I do not feel comfortable for people to bring in a program that, you know, hey, it works really well, I use it at home, and it helps me, the city, to put together this, whatever. That should, those kind of applications should not come into our environment unless it's been vetted and tested by, you know, city management. So my only comment is if that's gonna be covered by the IT policy and we lock down IT technology that way, then I'm okay with that. But I'm not comfortable if the city allows staff or anybody to bring in a program from home and put it on their program. But if we've got that covered, and I haven't read every policy, but if you've guys got that covered, then my amendment may not be needed.
Right, right. That's a valid point, and the long and short is we just, both through policy and through procedure, we don't allow employees, including myself, to install any application on city PCs without IT approval. So I think our staff can attest, it's safe to say our IT environment is pretty locked down, but. But the.
Better for worse.
Brian runs the title.
Fort Lejeune, as I've heard someone refer to. But, but again, not to negate your comments, because I think they are valid. I think it's a matter of whether or not we would want every eventuality to be presented directly to the city manager. It's an option, but I just want to give you a flavor for what we do, both from a directive standpoint and from an IT administrative or procedural standpoint.
Again, my concern is not letting anything in the environment. If your policy covers that, then, you know, I don't need these changes, per se. But if they don't, I'm always a fan of clarity, and this clarifies something. You know, clarity, you will not do it if we say no. And so I just always like to be crystal clear wherever we can be, and so that there's not any conflict, so. But I'll go with that if you guys are comfortable that our policy is strong enough.
And Mr. Roden, those are great questions and comments. And we actually do have a section, it's the 11.0408, we call it the Fort Lejeune section. It pretty much addresses that concern. We're gonna lock it down through our IT department. We'll have internal policies that take care of that concern.
Okay. Thank you for letting me make my comments, so.
My pleasure.
And did you, did you have a follow-on?
I did, but I think he's already answered. It was about the AI tools, but since they're going to establish in their policy what AI tools, it's exact similar comment that I had on this other one. So I'll just, we'll just, I'll yield the floor.
Okay. Any other comments on the personnel policies that are being presented? Any comments from anyone here tonight? Then from council, can I get a motion to approve a resolution amending the City of Fair Oaks Ranch's personnel policies?
Go move. Second.
Scott seconded. Any further discussion? Was it Scott?
Yes.
Any further discussion from council? Motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you, Jim. And the last consideration item that we have on the agenda tonight is the consideration and possible action approving a final plat request from Sutterly Homes Limited on behalf of Oak Bend Forest, Elsie, for Oak Bend Subdivision Phase One proposing 55 single-family residential lots. And Lee, you gonna lead us through the discussion on the final plat?
Correct, yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. My name's Lee Muniz. I'm the manager of Engineering Services. I'm here to, I'll be presenting a brief summary of the Oak Bend subdivision final plat. So the Oak Bend Phase One subdivision will be plating 55 single-family lots for the first of two phases of the 149-acre tract of land located north of Ralph Fair Road in Honeycomb Rock. The P&amp;Z approved a recommendation to the city council for the preliminary plat approval on September 12th, and was followed up with a city council approval on October 3rd with six conditions that are listed on page 60 of the agenda packet. The latest final plat submitted has been reviewed, and it was determined that all six conditions have been met. Staff would like to recommend approval of the final plat with the following two conditions. First, an all-weather surface for temporary fire truck turnarounds will be provided. Just to give you a little background, since this is only the first of two phases, some streets will not be fully constructed until the completion of Phase Two, which results in a temporary dead end. Fire trucks need adequate space to properly turn around, and these roads must be adequately constructed to allow usage during all-weather conditions. The second condition is correct, all scribner errors will be made to the final plat prior to recordation. During the March meeting, P&amp;Z approved a recommendation to city council for the final plat approval with the same two conditions. And that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from council?
Has the tree plan been made, or has that come later?
Correct, yes. The tree plan has been presented and approved.
Okay.
Staff did do a walkthrough with the developer, and we evaluated each of the trees, and we found that it did meet all minimum criteria.
Thank you.
Anybody else? And Lee, just a quick question. The two conditions that you presented, you've already talked to the developer, and they have no issues.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And you don't see any issues in them meeting those two conditions?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions from anyone here tonight? Then can I get a motion to approve the final plat for Oak Bend Subdivision Phase One with the following two conditions, that the applicant provide an all-weather surface for temporary fire truck turnarounds, and the applicant will correct all administrative errors on the final plat prior to recordation? Is that Jonathan? And a second?
A second.
Laura? Any other discussion from council? With the motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Thanks, Lee.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, that completes all of the consideration items that we had on the agenda tonight. We have one workshop item to go through, and Summer's gonna present our budget calendar.
Good evening.
Calendar for developing the budget.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Summer Fleming, Director of Finance. So I will go over the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 budget calendar on page 87 in the agenda packet, and then I'll show the dates on the screen to make it easier to follow along. For consistency, we are following the same budget process as the last three budget cycles, so some of you will be very familiar with that. Staff is already well into the budget process. Department heads will be submitting their operating budget requests to the finance department on April 25th. And then, once submitted, the finance department and city manager will begin reviewing those requests with each department. And then we have council workshops for the department budgets starting in June. So we will run a concurrent process with council, starting at the next council meeting. Assistant City Manager Jim Williams will hold a strategic action plan workshop on April 17, and then on May 1st, I will present the five-year financial plan. Now, both plans set the foundation for developing the fiscal year 25-26 budget and shaping the long-term financial direction of the city. We've done our best to manage the workload of each workshop by splitting up meetings based on the size of department budgets to allow larger budgets a little more time. You can see how those are scheduled in June and July. Last year, we did cancel the July 4th regularly scheduled meeting, but I've kept the July 3rd meeting in this draft calendar pending any guidance to the contrary. I've added in timing of a certificate of obligation sale for the utility and possibly drainage, which is based on the approved CIP. I will be meeting with staff to see how projects are progressing and determine if we are on track for that scheduled second issuance and exactly how much we might need to issue. The sale would advertise for one week, and then best-case scenario would be to award the sale to the lowest bidder at that August 7 meeting. And in that same meeting, I'll submit the calculated tax rates to council, assuming we receive certified values timely on July 25th. Now, in the event that's delayed, as happened in the past, I'll review an alternate timeline at the end of the presentation. So with those calculated rates, we'll bring a resolution setting the maximum tax rate that council will consider for fiscal year 25-26, and we'll schedule that public hearing. We'll also follow up on any budget questions and funding decisions to receive guidance from council before the proposed budget is filed with the city secretary on August 18. And then I do have a placeholder for a budget workshop on August 21st in the event we have delays with those certified values. But the current calendar assumes that we will be on track. So similar to last year, we'll have one special meeting for budget adoption. Now, I've listed both Tuesday, September 9, and Thursday, September 11 for discussion. The P&amp;Z is scheduled to meet on Thursday, September 11. So like last year, we can plan to have that special meeting on Tuesday, September 9, or council may want to consider rescheduling the P&amp;Z meeting. And then final adoption would be at the September 18 regularly scheduled meeting. So this is if everything goes according to plan. But as I mentioned earlier, if we have a delay in receiving those certified values, we have to get them from three counties, and it takes a lot of work, even preparing the tax calculation after we receive those. We could use that August 21 meeting where we would present the resolution setting that maximum tax rate and scheduling the public hearing. And then everything would be pushed back a week, including filing the budget on August 25, holding the public hearing on September 18, and then final adoption would have to be at a special meeting on September 25. Now, that timeline does cut very close to the last day of the fiscal year and the statutory deadline, so it's not ideal. But we'll know by August 1st how that timing will go. So tonight, there's no formal action required, but I welcome any guidance on the planning process or the proposed timeline just presented.
Thanks, Summer.
Sure.
Any questions? Pretty straightforward. Calendar's easy. Okay. Any questions from anyone here tonight on the timeline? All right. Thank you, Summer. Does any council member have any announcements that they'd like to present as part of the meeting tonight? Yes, ma'am.
So April 15 is purple up for military kids, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. So this is Military Kids Month, and April 15 is the day you wear purple in support of military kids, so just wanted to state that.
Anybody else? I have one announcement, and we've put out a lot of information on it, but the new drought contingency plan went into effect on April 1st this week. As part of that new plan, we added a new stage four. If you had questions on it, I checked it today. If you go to the city's website, it's right at the top of the website. It provides all the information related to the change, and even lists out all of the new restrictions as part of each of the stages and the well levels of where they're implemented, or how we implement each of the staging. So if you have questions on that, you can go to the city website. And currently, we're still in Stage Two. So even though we've changed the plan, we were in Stage Two prior, we're currently in Stage Two as part of the new plan. And we did have some good rain last week. And I talked to Grant, well, on Tuesday, and he let me know that our well levels are, we're pretty steady. We dropped three feet, and we came back up, I don't know, two, two and a half feet. So we're maintaining our water level at a pretty consistent rate right now. Scotty, anything else to add?
Nothing further from me.
We will be going into executive session tonight pursuant to Section 551. Oh, correction. Are there any, does any council member have anything they'd like added to a future agenda? Okay. We will be going into executive session tonight pursuant to Section 551.101 of the Open Meetings Act. Texas Government Code of Quorum of the governing body hereby convenes into closed session, and we'll do this under Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property. The city council will meet in closed session to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of reproperty that may be considered for future location of water and wastewater system improvements. And for executive session, I will need all of council, the city manager, the city attorney, the assistant city managers, the director of public works, and the director of finance. And I expect that it'll be a short period, that we'll be in executive session for 30 minutes. And Christine, I have the time now, it is 7:54, and we are moving into executive session.